We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Calhoun, Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Prapp.
Here.
McGarretti.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
Yor.
Come on, go ahead.
We don't know about Spence, but move to excuse Jill and Spence.
Okay.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Prapp.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. I don't see any on the agenda. Does anyone else have any at this time? Okay, we will move on to adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Prapp.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Okay. This is the portion of the meeting that we invite the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you come to the microphone. We give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. Go ahead, come on up.
Hello, Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Van. I'm standing here on behalf of the Macomb YMCA. Boy, it's been a hectic two, three weeks with Halloween and everybody's doing things early. And just to let you know, a lot of people think, what does the Y do? Well, during the summer, we hosted 799 children for summer day camp over an 11-week period. Thirty percent were on scholarship or discounted membership. We also partnered with Orchards and Macomb County Mental Health that offers services to community participants. Through a grant offered by Huron Clinton, Huron County Metro Authority, we taught over 150 children how to swim. And that was just awesome. It truly was. And there was no charge for them. So when you donate to the Y or when we have our fundraisers or golf outings, these are some of the things that it goes to. And for our Halloween event last Friday, we had over 200 people attend for games, fun, and food. And also, we were at the Trunk or Treat with the... I keep forgetting our names, so many organizations.
The Optimists, yes.
With the Optimists. And it was truly awesome. It was truly awesome, just to see everybody out and about. We will be offering holiday baskets just before Thanksgiving, available to anyone in Macomb County. So you'll know how to go to that if you go online to our website and different things like that. But like I say, it's more than just that building sitting on the corner. We do awesome things. We thank the people that did our golf outing and the donation of the gifts and prizes that were offered for, you know, people to vote on and to buy. And it was truly awesome. And I just think the city of Mount Clemens were allowing me to come forward to let people know, because I always hear, what does the Y do? And we also was at Karnes Community New Playground. Our Susan was there. Some of us were back trying to get the building set up for the other thing. So, thank you so much.
Good news.
Ms. Ruthie, please thank the Y for us. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. I have a couple things. One, the first one is, I need to know the date of the last master plan. That's kind of important, and something seems to be missing. They did finally back a JV cutting or whomever take care of that mess on the alley with all the overgrown weeds. They butchered them. Now, that line of trees was put in because the community development department, as usual, thought it was okay to do a little sacrifice zoning and butt us right up against industrial. And the city let us go to the then Community Relations Commission. And Eugene Hanna-Tuck, remember him? He chaired it. And they arranged to put those trees up. I'd like to know who's going to fix that butcher job. Maybe if they had taken care of their land to begin with, they wouldn't have had to butcher them to get them done. And number two, if the city got its poop in a group and kind of issued them a violation, I have pictures going back 14 months. Who was asleep at the switch when that... God knows, they come around with a measuring stick and check your grass, make sure it's not over six, eight inches. But they could just let that go and go and go. Why? I'd like to know why that issue wasn't addressed sooner. And since I found out that the city's not going to address its own violations the way they should, I have contacted the EPA again, as I did back when JV cutting over in their plant number one decided to take care of their faulty dust collector by opening up an overhead door and putting in a industrial fan to blow all the crud out into the neighborhood. And we filed a complaint, ended up in court. And I remember when Judge Davis looked down at Mr. Phil Houghton and said, "You understand people are trying to live where you are." He didn't like it well tough. And if people there don't like it now that I've called it, because the JV cutting, both plants, one and two, they're... Three departments are on the radar. JV cutting is on the air pollution, water pollution, ground pollution, especially air pollution, because now that they also got bakes and crop in there, I assume they're doing work too. So that's going to increase it. And if anything goes wrong with the dust collector, we'll be polluted again. And I know I can't count on them to handle it correctly. So the EPA does have one on the radar, and we won't even have to check because you've got people coming out to look at you. So they better get their act again, their poop in the group. Everybody's failing to do their jobs. Why?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during the previous meetings. The Honorable Mayor and members of the City Commission, at the October 7, 2024 Commission Meeting, during public comment, the following questions were asked. Is there an ordinance that prevents someone from having a garden in their front yard? And the answer is no, there is no ordinance preventing gardens in the front yard. The next question was, is there an ordinance that prevents residents from placing their garbage in the street in front of their homes on trash collection day instead of the curb? The ordinance states as follows. Placement: All refuse and bulk items shall be placed at the designated collection point for collection at a location next to the curb, but not in the travel portion of the right-of-way. Refuse must be at the collection point by 7:00 a.m. of the scheduled pickup day. And all residents are prohibited from depositing refuse from collection prior to 6:00 p.m. the preceding evening, sorry. Respectfully submitted Greg Shipman, City Manager. Any questions or comments from the commission on that?
So next to the curb on either side?
I think we need, maybe we could add some clarification on that, because it sounds like it's... It could be on the street. I thought, I kind of said on the street, but, Rob, do you want to?
I mean, if it's on the median touching the curb...
You can park there. You're talking about the curb sits here, and then this is the street?
Yeah, is that in the travel?
No, I'm talking about the grass area between the sidewalk and the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
In the easement area between the grass and the curb, right? But we're wondering if it's against the curb in the street, is that still okay?
Is that the right-of-way?
It seems like that would fall under the definition of travel portion, because you can travel, you know, you don't have to be a certain distance away from the curb. So I would think that, it seems to me you can't put the can there.
So it's got to be on the...
Medium.
Off what you call.
Grass.
Yeah.
So is that something we enforce? Again. I mean, it's...
Who's the trash police?
It's probably at least worth putting out a public notice.
Yeah, it must have been. Yeah, that would be...
With the bill saying, hey, it's a reminder.
Coming down the street, and some of them just put it in the middle, you know, in the right-of-way, not on the corners. Didn't know it was an issue.
I, yeah. We did not get a... But...
Whatever.
All right, moving on to approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Do we have support?
Support.
Questions or comments about the minutes? Call the roll, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Prapp.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Moving to general business, 9A Disorderly Person and Trespass Ordinance Amendment, First Reading.
Move to introduce a City of Mount Clemens ordinance amendment to disorderly person and trespass ordinance Section 2, 0.000, Section 1, and Section 2, 0.00, Section 12. That further defines and clarifies definitions and prohibitions of disorderly and loitering conduct and provides penalties for such violations and set November 4 of 2024 as the date of adoption.
To properly address, oh, sorry.
Support.
Thank you. To properly address issues related to disorderly persons, trespass, and loitering, it is necessary to further define and clarify definitions for such conduct and provide clear penalties for such violations. This will give the Macomb County Sheriff Department clearly defined rules to enforce, providing the tools they need to provide their, to perform their duty. The attached amendment will further define and clarify definitions and prohibitions of disorderly and loitering conduct and provide penalties for such violations. The attached amendment was prepared by the city attorney. All right, who has questions or comments?
First, I'd like to thank Rob for clarifying. Thanks for me having the time. I appreciate that.
Certainly covered a lot of situations.
Very specific.
Well, a lot of the situations were covered before, but they didn't have...
Detail. Not the same detail.
Right, they didn't have the detail at this stage.
Really, what, when you think about test cases involving, and Commissioner Rick raised that issue earlier today, you know, it's because things are overly broad, and if it's not specific, somebody who's not acting appropriately doesn't really know that it's inappropriate, because it's not clear what they're doing that's wrong. So, but the courts have said with these is, if you can give more detail, it's more likely to be enforced. So this is a, you know, a newer version of what you had before, trying to give that type of detail.
When we looked at other communities and what they had, we did try to bring some other ideas to the table that might have been even more stringent. But we, but Rob, thankfully, our city attorney, looked at the ordinance through the lens of not trying to vilify homeless people in terms of, or anybody unhoused, and not trying to make being unhoused illegal, right? Because there was a Supreme Court case that basically defined that, right?
Right.
So we tried to make sure that we were staying within the rights of everybody, in other words, the right to have a safe place and the right to be homeless.
Yeah, I think it's a good addition.
Okay, does anybody else have any further questions or comments? For the, this is the first reading. Okay, call the roll, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Prapp.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Okay, we will move to general business, 9B Turnout Gear Purchase and Grant Approval.
Move to approve the purchase of turnout gear in the amount of $71,550, with $42,000 being reimbursed from the State of Michigan Turnout Gear Grant Program.
Support.
The State of Michigan, in a partnership with the Michigan Professional Firefighters Union, has developed a grant program and has allocated $15 million to provide a significant cost share for communities with full-time fire departments for the purchase of additional sets of turnout gear for frontline firefighters. The state allocation for the Mount Clemens Fire Department is $42,000. This will be a reimbursement from the State of Michigan once the equipment is received and the total invoice is paid. The invoice total of $71,550 less $42,000 will equal a final cost to Mount Clemens of $29,550, which has been accounted for in the fiscal year 2425 operating budget. This will save the fire department nearly 42% on needed PPE, which has only a 10-year shelf life per MIOSHA and other recognized national safety standards. This cancer risk reduction initiative will allow our firefighters to have an additional set of turnout gear with the same thermal performance and safety characteristics as their primary set that they will place in service when their primary set is going through the post-fire decontamination process. Cancer, as you may know, is a serious concern for firefighters. They are routinely exposed to known carcinogens, and contaminated PPE is determined to be a primary source of repeated and prolonged exposure. Acceptance of this grant opportunity will be a great step forward in the fire department's risk management plan and will improve the fire, sorry, will improve the health and safety of our first responders. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the grant documents. Questions or comments?
I would just like to emphasize how helpful having a second set of gear would be, because it's not just where they are responding that's the source of carcinogens. The firefighting foam, the A triple F, is a very well-known carcinogen that a lot of Navy folks have had to deal with as well. And if you've only got one set of turnout gear, and you have to go from one run to the next, you're still just all buddy-buddy with those carcinogens between runs. And prolonged exposure drastically increases risks. So I am thrilled to see that we're in a grant covering most of this, and that it will definitely reduce the cancer risks for our first responders in a very real and practical way.
Well put.
Well said. Very good information.
Is there anyone else who has any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Prapp.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Moving to consent agenda, which there isn't anything on the consent agenda today, so we'll move to the city manager's report. Let's see, okay. Under Community Development, the city has updated its policies and fees for the use of water from public fire hydrants. Contractors are charged an upfront tap fee to cover the cost of a meter, backflow preventer, and city installation. Hydrants will now also be metered, so contractors are paying for the true amount of water usage. Under Streets, as a reminder, the city sanitation contractor will be picking up leaves and compost at the curb on your regular trash day through December 6, 2024. Please do not rake or blow leaves into the street. For the Clerk's Office, early voting begins on Saturday, October 26, from 8:30 to 4:30 here at City Hall for nine consecutive days, including weekends, through Sunday, November 3. The last day for an absentee ballot to be mailed to a voter by the Clerk's Office is Friday, November 1. All ballots must be received by 8:00 p.m. November 5 in order to be counted. For Recreation, join Mount Clemens Parks and Recreation on November 15 for a Detroit Institute of Arts bus trip and guided tour. The trip is free for seniors. Sign up today at mountclemensrecreation.org and check out the many other programs coming soon. Local Treasure Award. The purpose of the Mount Clemens Local Treasure Award is to provide recognition to the men and women of our city who have made our city a better place to live through exemplary positive contributions. The spirit of the award is to bring attention to those who have not been recognized and publicly acknowledged their contributions, however large or small. The nominee must be a resident or business owner of the city of Mount Clemens, and the actions of the nominee must have contributed a positive lasting legacy to our city and its residents. Nominations may be submitted by any resident. All nominations must be in writing using a nomination form. Nomination deadline is Monday, December 16, 2024. Nomination forms are available on the city webpage or may be picked up from the city manager's office. The Mount Clemens Beautification Committee Skeleton Contest. The Mount Clemens Beautification Committee is once again sponsoring a skeleton contest. This year's theme is Music Symphony of Bones. The contest will run from Friday, October 11 through Thursday, October 31. The winners will be announced on Halloween. Watch for the decorated skeletons at businesses and city offices through Mount Clemens. I think we have over 20 who are participating. City of Mount Clemens Seventh Annual Tinsel Tour. The City of Mount Clemens is seeking local families, service clubs, schools, scout troops, and businesses who are interested in decorating a Christmas tree for the city's Seventh Annual Tinsel Tour. The decorated trees will light up Cherry Street Mall from Sunday, December 8 through Thursday, January 2 for everyone to enjoy. Trees may be decorated in any theme. Use your creativity to make the city sparkle. The cost to sponsor a tree is $100. This includes the cost of the tree, signage, a strand of 200 lights, city fees, and proper environmental disposal of the trees. Registration forms and a complete list of rules and guidelines are available online at mountclemens.gov and in the city manager's office at City Hall. 20 trees will be distributed this year on a first-come, first-served basis, and we already have people who are signing up. So it's exciting. We have upcoming events, which is Night Out is October 23, Shop Downtown, Light Refreshments, Discounts, Tarot Card Readings, and Witch Hat Contest. Anybody have any questions or comments for the city manager's report? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to public participation. This is the second opportunity that we allow the public to address the commission. Again, we ask that you come to the microphone, give us your full name, residential address, and abide by our two-minute rule. If anyone would like to come up to the mic?
Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. A number of people and myself included, if Mr. Shipman is so, and I understand Mr. Shipman was hurt on personal time, not at work. You got Mr. Wood sitting back there in the corner. He's been city manager a number of times. It's just not a good idea to have that chair vacant. Are you paying it? Is he being paid to sit home in bed and be sick? If he's out of order, he's out of order. And you're out of order if you don't get that place replaced. Mr. Wood has always done a good job before, and except unless Mr. Shipman works kind of incestuously with the commission to give him what they want. I think probably you need to have somebody who knows how to be a city manager. I am sorry that he's sick, but hey, stuff happens, and the city has to deal with it. And the idea of you letting him continue in his job, he's going to have surgery, he's going to be on drugs, how clear-headed, come on! Waste our money, why don't you?
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission? Seeing none, we will move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner McGarretti.
Just wanted to, Mount Clemens is doing so many things. That last report, if you're bored, relook up the city manager's report of things to do within the city. Even if you're just walking around and looking at the decorations, you could look at the trees, there's just so much to do in the city, and I'm very grateful to be a resident. Thank you for that report. Along with it, like Resident Ruthie Stevenson said, trunk or treat has been going on now for a good while, probably all of October. It's like Black Friday, it's no longer the day before or the day after, it's the whole month. And so trunk or treat will be again in Mount Clemens on this Saturday at the Karnes Community Center from 6 to 8, where we will feed the children. And then we'll have, you can bring your car and decorate it and pass out whatever treat you want to bring, or you could just bring your car and sit and pass out your treat. Or you can come in the gym and take a seat, where we'll be playing bingo, jenga, a lot of games with, from young to old, and even mix in between. The purpose is bringing the community together, not scaring one another, just having a good time for about an hour and a half for a free event. And that's all I wanted to share about what it's kind of like coming up. I did have Edison Crossing. I don't know if that was in our budget for contractors, is that in our budget book?
We don't, we don't have any.
Okay, I just wanted to know, who are the contractors for, in reference to Edison Crossing?
Okay.
I'm sure we could find out.
Yeah, I believe that they work with the county through the Veterans Affairs Office, because they have a veteran, but we'll get them, we'll get some more information from it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Fournier?
Well, as Commissioner McGarretti just said, I mean, our children already have their trick-or-treat bags full, because last, this last weekend, between Karnes, the playground grand opening, between the Cracker House, the YMCA, the Optimists, the Trunk or Treat, the DDA, the Art Center, I mean, you couldn't do it all. I mean, there was no, and especially the library and the fire department, thank you very much. My four-year-old granddaughter tried her best to hit it all, but her grandmother petered out. Enough pictures, enough, enough, enough candy. But it was a great, this weekend was just wonderful, especially, thank you God for the weather, and we, we had a, we had a great time. And we appreciate everyone's efforts and all the people who have contributed to make those events happy. There's a lot of happy children in the city of Mount Clemens on Saturday. And I want to just wish City Manager Shipman, Shipman health, and we are supporting him. And best of luck tomorrow during surgery and after on his recovery. And I have to say, he has been involved since we get the regular emails, the regular phone calls, and he is keeping up with everything and anything. So thank you to him for all his hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rick?
Thank you. First, I'd like to say I was happy to be at the opening of the playground at Karnes. Glad to see we got playground equipment in the neighborhood that has been baffled for a little while. I'd like to again thank the Clerk's Office for their continued work. Good luck with the upcoming work that I know will, will be there. I would like to specifically mention a bit of positive feedback I saw online on social media. There was a new resident who said, hey, what's the road clearing like around here when the snow and everything hits? And every single reply except one was, they're fast, they're all over it, they're great, they're quick to respond, they're quick to get there. Somebody was like, even if they miss it, I call them, they're right out there. And the one resident who had an issue, we're already working through that to figure out exactly what's going on there. But 20-some-odd positive replies on social media with no major negative replies is, that's a really good sign.
Yeah.
With how social media is these days. I would like to say, with Halloween coming up, please be careful. There's lots of distracting, amazing Halloween setups, but keep your eyes on the road, watch for children, watch for adults. Also coming up is the Mount Clemens Santa Parade, and if you're interested in volunteering for it, attending it, or being in it, more information is at mountclemensantaparade.com or you can Google it. And we'd love to have you in whatever way you want to be there. And as a reminder, the area between the sidewalk and the street, you're not allowed to put political signs there. Also as a reminder, it is not individual residents' job to police other residents' signs, so don't mess with other people's stuff. But if you do want to serve the public in some way, I recommend looking on our website for boards, committees, and commissions which currently have openings and former information, you can call or go to mountclemens.gov/boards. Thank you.
That's perfect, I love it, perfect. Great segue, thank you. Commissioner Dempsey?
I have two things that I wanted to speak about. One is, Macomb County Historical Society presents Halloween at the Cracker Manor, which is this Saturday from 5 to 10. And we're going to have all sorts of paranormals, we're going to have tea leaf reading, we're We're going to have tea leaf reading, we're going to have tree switches, dances, and spooky candles and historical stories. So bring the kids, it's a great event, it's always fun. Popcorn outside, there'll be a fire going on and everything. So just continue the rest of this month with Halloween things. Because there seems to be a lot of it around and that. And it was a great turnout on Saturday, I have to say. The other thing Mrs. Haller brought up, Ms. Haller brought up, I too am questioning why the city assistant city manager, which we do have one, is not sitting in, representing the city manager. This is a city manager form of government and that we should have somebody sitting in that seat. So I'm just curious why we haven't. And we should. It's the way the government, our city government runs. And since we do have somebody who has that title, I'm not quite sure why that person isn't representing the city manager. Even though Mr. Shipman is working from home, we all get emails. It's still, it's perception that we need to have somebody in that seat. Thank you.
Okay, I want to thank the Recreation Department for putting on the Karnes Playground opening. I really very much appreciate that the playground was celebrated because we're very excited to be able to put that project together with the cooperation of the Community Development Block Grant and the city funds to be able to bring a playground to a community that hasn't had one. And then I would also like to remind people that we will have the State of the City Address that will take place at the Emerald Theater on Friday. Tickets can be purchased through the Macomb County Chamber website for $35. And I would like to wish everyone a happy Halloween. It should be fun in the city. And of course, as everyone else said, there's tons of activities. Just a reminder that typically are trick-or-treating hours, even though we don't technically enforce any hours at the city. We have had calls about that and social media posts are from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And so just to address the city manager situation, which it would have been great if he would have, I mean, we've had several, three or four opportunities to have heard that complaint or that concern. That concern. But we, you know, this is a very temporary situation and so we, we have been carrying on. So if we will, we will definitely, we will definitely address that. Thank you for your concern.
Well, I think we should as a group. And that's why I address it.
Thank you for your concern. If anyone else has any questions, we will definitely address those. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Of course.
Anybody have any questions or comments about that? Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Oh, sorry, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Be careful, Macomb is very dark.